I call the January 11, 2023 Hampton City School Board Reorganizational Meeting to order. This is the annual reorganizational meeting of the Hampton City School Board. As such, I will preside over the meeting until the election of a chairperson of the Hampton City School Board for the 2023 school year, which will occur momentarily. Ms. Bowers, please call the roll.
Ms. LaFonja?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all School Board members are present. At this time, we'll move to the opening and we'll ask our student representative to lead us at this particular time and make appropriate introductions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith. Hello, everyone. It's glad to be here. I'm glad to be here. I am now going to welcome Tristan Eugene Ah, a fifth grade student at Mary Peak Elementary School, to come to the podium and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us. Everyone, please stand up.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with clarity and justice for all.
I'll now ask...
And it was all.
There you go. You are free to share whatever you have with us.
I will be reading a poem called "The Road Not Taken" by Robert Frost. "The Road Not Taken" by Robert Frost. "Two roads diverged in a yellow wood, and sorry I could not travel both. In B1 traveled long I stood and looked down one as far as I could, to where it bent in the undergrowth. Then took other as just as fair, in having perhaps the better claim, because it was grassy and wanted where, though I fought for that the passing there had worn them really about the same. And both that morning equally lay in leaves; no step had trodden black. Oh, I kept the first for another day, yet knowing how way leads on to way, I doubted if I should ever come back. I shall be telling this with a sigh, somewhere ages and ages hence, two roads diverged in a wood, and I, I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference."
You sure have made a difference. You are an amazing student. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. First, I want to ask, why did you choose this selection for us tonight?
Because it is Sheriff Hicks' favorite poem.
Oh, that's great. What is your favorite subject at elementary school at Mary Peak?
Science.
Science? Why? You just like science stuff and...
Yes.
Well, I just want to say, you have so much potential in the future. And as a fifth grade student, you're going to be entering middle school next year. And you have your brother behind you as well, your parents. Can you all stand up to be recognized? So behind you is a team of amazing people who are going to be supporting you the whole entire way. And as you move on with your academic career, I want you to fully pursue whatever, everything you got and follow the words of the author of that selection. And continue to really pursue your dreams and goals, because, like I said, you have that full support behind you, and you have a brother to look up to, as well as parents, and your little sister, probably. So, yeah, that's all.
And I think we have your principal? Let's ask your principal to stand as well. Thank you so very much. School Board members? Any remarks? Comments? Tristan, thank you again for being with us, and we're so proud of you and all of your accomplishments, and to the family members, and certainly to your building administrator. Thank you for being present, and we're so proud to have you as a part of Hampton City Schools. And we ask that you continue to go forward and do great things. I want you to know that that's one of my favorites as well. So thank you for sharing, okay? Very much. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Okay. I know, please... And you may have another poem or something for us, so... All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the January 11, 2023 School Board meeting agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move approval of the agenda as presented with the following amendment, that we add action item 6.17, personnel action item 2023, tac 01.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Thank you. We'll now move into the swearing-in ceremony, and we're delighted to have with us the Honorable Christopher Hutton with us. Thank you for being present, and we'll now move into the swearing-in ceremony for Mr. Joseph Kilgore, Dr. Richard Mason, and Mr. Jason Samuels as well. We'll turn it over to you at this time. Thank you.
You go ahead. You do.
Samuels goes first.
Here it comes.
Follow what the judge just said.
That's right. You heard the judge.
The Honorable, yes.
I want to thank the board, all the members here, for the opportunity to be here and do this. Very important responsibility for the community. And we are given the direction as to who goes first, and that's you. Okay?
No problem.
Ready? All right. Raise your right hand, please. Aye, your name?
Aye. Jason St. Aubin Samuels.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties?
That I will faithfully and...
Impartially.
Impartially. And impartially...
Discharge.
Discharge the duties?
Incumbent?
Incumbent.
Upon me as a member of the Hampton School Board?
Upon me as a member of the Hampton School Board.
For the city of Hampton, Virginia?
For the city of Hampton, Virginia.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God?
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir. And thank you for your service.
Congratulations.
Nice to see you, Joe.
Aye, Joseph Kilgore.
Do solemnly swear that I will support?
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
Duties incumbent upon me?
The duties incumbent upon me?
As a member of the Hampton School Board for the city of Hampton?
A member of the Hampton City School Board for the city of Hampton?
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God?
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service.
Dr. Richard Mason?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Aye?
Aye, Richard and Mason Jr.
Do solemnly swear that I will support?
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
Duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Hampton School Board?
Duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Hampton City School Board?
For the city of Hampton, Virginia?
For the city of Hampton, Virginia.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God?
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Thanks, sir. Everybody?
Mr. Superintendent?
To the Honorable Christopher Hutton, thank you so very much for being present with us and...
Mr. Superintendent, can I thank Judge Hutton also for being willing to come on so many times in my last 15 years here on the board? We appreciate your support. We appreciate what your wife did for this division, and I've known you since you were the Commonwealth's attorney here, and you are now retiring, and we will miss you very much, because you have been very dedicated to supporting this board, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Mr. Joseph Kilgore, Dr. Richard Mason, and Mr. Jason Samuels. Thank you. We shall now move to the time on the agenda for the organizational aspect of the meeting. Is there a motion for the chairmanship of the Hampton City School Board for the 2023 school year? Yes. Mr. Kilgore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my honor to nominate Dr. Richard Mason to continue being the chair of the Hampton City School Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it has certainly been moved, and also seconded, so at this time, is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Congratulations to you, sir. It's my pleasure to... Thank you for your leadership. And we can change seats if you'd like. I'm just kidding. So thank you for your leadership, and we look forward to working with you, and all the best, and turn the remaining portion of the meeting over to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Superintendent. I would like to take a moment just to thank my fellow board members for their vote of confidence to reelect me in this position. I don't know if I'm just a glutton for punishment. I don't know if this is an honor or a task, but I'm certainly pleased to continue to work and represent this board. You all definitely make it easy as we work together to do the great things for Hampton City Schools. So thank you for your vote of confidence. At this time, we will move on to item number 3.02, where the board shall elect one of its members as a vice chair. And at this time, the board, the chair, will entertain a motion. Ms. Cherry?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate as vice chair Dr. Tina Banks Gray.
Is there a second?
I would like to second that motion.
All right. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded that we elect Ms. Dr., excuse me, Tina Banks Gray as vice chair for the Hampton City School Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, sir. Thanks again, Mr. Chair. As most of you know, I've held a leadership position on this board ever since I was elected, with the exception of a short stint. And six months ago, I made you all a promise. I said, "In January, a change is going to come." I had not anticipated being vice chair then, but as a board, we got together and we all talked about what we thought we needed moving forward. Now, I am so pleased to have served in leadership, because I do it with my heart. But I also know that Dr. Tina Banks Gray does everything with her heart and her leadership skills. We've worked very well together. It's because of all of the wonderful leadership opportunities she has afforded this community and the leadership position she has been in throughout this community that this community elected her to this board in the first place. We have worked very well together. She is someone who is not afraid to ask hard questions, but she's also someone who understands that the best key to communication is not talking, but listening. I am just honored to have her not only on the board, but I know without a doubt she will make an exceptional vice chair of the Hampton School Board.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Banks Gray.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, give me an opportunity to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. First off, I want to thank Ms. Ann Stevens Cherry for the nomination. I am truly grateful. I know I have some huge shoes to fill, but I will do my absolute best. Interesting story, though, Ms. Cherry. I went to, the other day, I was doing a Google search, and I was looking for examples of phenomenal woman of all times, and lo and behold, your picture popped up, ma'am. I'm like, you know, I knew she was some kind of special when that picture popped up. But no, all seriously...
Was that the Disney Channel?
No, ma'am. Absolutely not. You are... You can be a Disney princess, princess, though. But seriously, though, you are the true example of awesomeness, and I thank you for your leadership, not only to our city and the contributions that you have given to our city, but Hampton City Schools, a wide range of just leadership skills and just the level of value that you bring to the table is just absolutely amazing, and we greatly appreciate you here. So thank you for the nomination. So with this position, I am over the moon with excitement for this new position. I look forward to working with Chair Mason, Dr. Smith, the rest of our Hampton City School Board members, and the leadership team. All are just such dynamic individuals. And can I take just a minute to please give my village a round of applause and for the support that they have given me? Can y'all please stand up tonight? Can we give them a round of applause? These are my village. This is my village. Thank you, y'all. I appreciate you so much. And I just want to, lastly, just say that I want to make sure that I serve in this position with greatness and continue to do meaningful things for our community and to ensure academic excellence for every child, every day, for whatever it takes. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much for the nomination.
And, Mr. Chair, is it okay if we make the ceremonial move?
Yes, you can.
All right.
Grammy thing, Ted.
Ms. Cherry, ma'am, aside Mr. Kilgore. I don't know if we want Ms. Cherry to sit by Mr. Kilgore. Ms. Bowers, we'll have to talk about this. All right. Moving right along. Item 3.03, "The School Board on the Recommendation of a Superintendent Shall Appoint Carolyn Bowers as the Clerk of the Board." Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. LaFonja and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve the School Board superintendent's recommendation to appoint Carolyn Bowers as clerk of the Board. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Bowers, and...
Thank you.
And for those of you who don't know, Ms. Bowers is truly the glue that keeps this board together. At least she keeps this chair together. That's for sure. So thank you so much for all that you do, Ms. Bowers.
You're welcome.
All right. Item 3.04, "The School Board on the Recommendation of a Superintendent Shall Appoint Sally Seidnizer as Deputy Clerk of the School Board." What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Dr. Banks Gray that we, on the recommendation of the superintendent, appoint Sally Seidnizer as deputy clerk of the school board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 3.05, "The School Board Shall Fix a Time, Date, and Place for Holding Regular Meetings for the ensuing year," and we do have that in place. Board members, you have seen that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we adopt the meeting schedule that has been placed on the board. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 3.06, "The School Board on the Recommendation of a Superintendent Shall Appoint Dr. John Cagiano as the superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the school board and represent the superintendent in his absence." What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Aye.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse, I think I heard first, that we appoint Dr. John Cagiano as the superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the school board and represent the superintendent in his absence. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Mr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
All right, we move along. The School Board on the Recommendation of a Superintendent Shall Appoint Kelly Gole as the Freedom Information Reporting Officer. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Second.
Is the move by the School Board superintendent, LaFonja, that we appoint Ms. Kelly Gole as the reporting officer for Hampton City Schools? Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. We're back up.
Tina did it.
Congratulations, Ms. Gole. And I do want to thank everyone for all of their hard work. Many of who have already been in these positions and done the work and have done the great work for Hampton City Schools, and so thank you for willing to step up once again in this next academic year to continue the great work for Hampton City Schools. All right. Item number four on the agenda is the consent agenda. And we have item 4.01, Personnel Report 23-01. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
I do a...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And members of the board, we'd ask that this time, the chief and members of the board and provide members of the board with the budget forecast.
Good evening, Chairman Mason and Vice Chair Banks Gray, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to provide a forecast for the fiscal year 2023-2024 governor's budget for next school year. We're currently in the second year of the state's biennial budget, so much of the changes that are proposed are actually amendments to the budget that was previously introduced last year at the state level. Throughout this presentation, we'll look at our fund structure within Hampton City Schools. We'll talk about our budget development process. We'll look at the school board's priorities for next school year. We'll discuss our revenue sources. We'll look at the main drivers of state funding, the governor's amendments to the budget, expenditure pressures, and we'll talk about next steps and key dates in the budget development process. So to kind of set the stage, and I know the school board is familiar, very familiar with our seven primary funds, but for anyone in the viewing audience that is not familiar, we do have several different funds that make up the Hampton City Schools' funding structure. Each one of these funds, they are distinct and separate. They include Pacific Income or Revenue and also Pacific Costs or Expenditures. Our largest fund, and I'm starting right at the top and going clockwise, our largest fund is Fund 50, the school operating fund. This is where our teacher salaries are comprised of, also our classroom supplies. All of those types of costs are calculated and accounted for in Fund 50, school operating fund. Our next largest fund is the Food and Nutrition Services. That is Fund 51, and that houses all of the revenue and expenditures for all of the cafeteria operations within our individual schools. Next, we have reimbursable projects, or Fund 60. This comprises primarily our grants. So when you hear things like Title I, and more recently, our federal pandemic grants, just last month, we did a presentation on an update to our ESTER III under the American Recovery Plan Act. So that is where we account for those resources. Our next fund is the Rental Income Fund, Fund 65. This is where we comprise our long-term contracts with external parties that are renting space within the school division. The Athletics Fund, as it's titled, Fund 94, this is where we comprise revenue and expenditures for all of the athletic programs within our school division. Then our Student Activity Fund, Fund 93, this comprises all of the activity that's related to clubs, fundraising, also faculty accounts are accounted for within Fund 93 as well. And then lastly, our Fund 95, our Hampton City Schools' instructional resource toolkit, and this primarily comprises the revenue that is received from customers who are external to the school division, who are purchasing our guaranteed and viable curriculum here in Hampton City Schools. So, as we look at our actual development process, all of our funds go through this five-step process. And then within Hampton City Schools, we always like to take a systems approach. So this process has been the same for the last four years. We look at it and we make tweaks to it, but we like to keep that system approach in place as we develop the budget each year. So the first part of the budget process is the planning phase, and that happens typically within the August to September timeframe each year. Then we move into data collection, and this is where I like to say is the meat of the process, because we stay in this process from about October all the way through February. And this is where we're asking departments to tell us, you know, what are the budget requests for next year? We survey the school board, you know, what are the priorities for next year as well. Around the December timeframe, our division leadership team, they take an active role in making sure that they review all of their department's budget requests before we start the process of talking through as a budget committee, you know, what should this proposal to the school board look like for next school year? And those meetings actually started last Friday. And then when we get to the April, May, or actually let me go back, when we get to the March timeframe, that is when we are proposing the budget to the school board. And then between March through May, we have different approvals that happen at the school board level all the way through city council. And of course, annually, by June 30th, we upload that approved budget into our financial system. So when we surveyed the school board, there were several priorities that were identified for next school year. And starting with maximizing every child's learning, because all of our priorities are always tied to our strategic plan, the school board identified the Academies of Hampton, also student achievement. Under attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff, competitive compensation for teachers and support staff, and also teacher and staff recruitment and retention. And then also, creating safe and nurturing schools and environments. The school board continued to identify us making sure that we have proper safety measures within our school buildings as well, to include violence prevention. So all of those priorities and all the many great activities that happen within Hampton City Schools, they're all made possible because of the many revenue resources that we receive. This slide shows a, by percentage, how much money we receive from our different revenue sources, to include state funding, state sales tax, local revenue, federal revenue, and so on. You'll see, looking at this breakdown, and this is looking at all of our funds, approximately 24% of all of the revenue that the school division receives comes from our local government, the city of Hampton. Now, all of those funds are accounted for in that main operating fund, Fund 50. So when we look at Fund 50 in isolation, local revenue actually makes up 32% of Fund 50. Our largest revenue source, it is state funds, and I also talk about state sales tax at the same time, but that makes up approximately 49% of our budget. So the remainder of our presentation is really focused around that 49% at this time as we talk about the forecast for next school year. So one of the main drivers for state funding is the Local Composite Index. Now, this is a measurement that the state utilizes to determine what is the locality's ability to pay for the minimum education requirements under the Standards of Quality, or SOQ. The main factors that go into this calculation by the state, it includes real property values, adjusted gross income, and taxable sales. Now, since we're in the second year of the state's two-year budget, our Local Composite Index has not changed, so it continues to be 27.31%, or 0.2731, as you see on the slide. The highest that a LCI can be is about 80%. The lowest it can be is 0%, but that directly impacts how much funding a school division receives. That second main driver is the average daily membership, and this is a calculation that looks at the total aggregate amount of membership within the school division. And then it divides that by the number of days that the school division is in session, from the first day of school all the way through the last day of school in March. So this is the main driver for our state revenue. Looking into next year, I do have good news to share with the school board and the community. Our projection for next year is 19,036. That is an increase of over 160 students. When we compare that to our current year's budgeted ADM of 18,870, that is something that we are very proud of here in Hampton City Schools. If you hear in the news about declines, you often hear that in other school divisions across the nation and even in the Commonwealth. But here in Hampton City Schools, we are getting back to those pre-pandemic levels for enrollment. So that is exciting. So as we take a look at Governor Youngkin's amendments to the biennial budget, again, this is the second year of the two-year state budget. Some of those highlights, they do include revisions to state sales tax and lottery revenue estimates, also making adjustments for enrollment projections. It continues to include a 5% compensation increase for SOQ or Standards of Quality Instructional and Support Positions effective July 1, 2023. What was new within this proposal, it includes a one-time 1% retention bonus for SOQ-funded instructional and support positions. And under this proposal for Governor Youngkin, those funds would be received by school divisions on September 1st of 2023, if approved. As we continue to look at the governor's amendments, it also includes state funding to support a performance pay for top-performing teachers, also a teacher recruitment incentive for hard-to-fill positions in hard-to-staff schools. I will note that for those two initiatives, we are still awaiting actual details of what that may look like for the school division. The governor also proposed to fund more early reading specialists, and I will make a slight adjustment to the slide and get it re-uploaded into Board Docs, but the state funding is for one reading specialist per 550 students in grades four and five. When I look at the actual detail from the governor's budget, it will provide state funding for an additional five reading specialists, if approved. And then the budget also continues to include hold harmless funding, and that is for data that was impacted by the pandemic that was used in the re-benchmarking process that actually occurred in the first year of the biennial budget. And then also continued hold harmless funding for the elimination of the food and hygiene tax for school divisions. So with that information, I would say the next question is, okay, Brittany, what does that mean for Hampton City Schools? So when looking at the detail, the impact would be a net increase of $3 million to Hampton City Schools, if approved. And when we calculate that number, we're looking at what is the current school year's original state funding budget, so that's fiscal year 2023, and then we compare that to what is being proposed for next school year under the governor's budget for fiscal year 2024. And again, that is a net increase of $3 million. Now, we say net because we have some additions and we have some reductions, and those are listed on the slide. So I'll start with the additions. So, again, that 5% for SOQ positions, that 5% compensation increase, that would be a $5.7 million increase in state funding. Additional $2.3 million of additional hold harmless funding for the food and hygiene tax that I mentioned. An additional $1.8 million for basic aid. One thing that would be impacting that number would be that additional state funding for early reading specialists. It does not make that a total amount up, but it's a part of that increase of 1.8 million. Then also, $800,000 for that 1% retention bonus for SOQ positions. And then there's also, right now, an additional $800,000 for remedial summer school. I will give a little caveat. Remedial summer school, we get funding for that, but that's based on our actual expenditures that are incurred. In order for us to receive that additional dollars, our summer school costs would need to be, I believe it was over $1.2 million. I don't know if that could ever be the case, but if it did, additional $800,000 could be received by the school division. And then on the reduction side, for this school year in 2023, we received school construction funds of about 6.4 million. We knew those were one-time when we developed the budget last year, so we do have to account for those funds not continuing. And then that is the same with the state funding that was received for the federal pandemic relief bonus that was just paid out in December last month. So in total, again, it is a net projected increase of $3 million to Hampton City School. So based on this projection, we've started in our budget committees to talk about what are our expenditure pressures for next school year. We're continuing to add to this list as those meetings continue through mid-February. But right now, we're looking at the impact of the changes in SOQ that could be approved for early reading specialists. Also, changes in healthcare, that is a pressure that we look at every year. And we're actually working with our third-party benefit consultant to look at what that cost may look like for fiscal year 2024. Also, compensation for teachers and support staff. And we also included here looking at minimum wage, so that is something that we are looking at, you know, how would that impact if we propose any increases to the school board? Recruitment and retention, and again, all these line up with the school board's priorities as well. Rising non-payroll costs for inflation. Like everyone else, you know, in our personal households, the division is experiencing the same thing. Contract costs are going up, goods and services, repair parts, those items are going up as well. So that is a pressure that we have to make sure that we plan for within our budget. And then also the federal pandemic grant closure, planning around that. I had the pleasure, and Dr. Smith did too, actually, to present, but as part of the vast Virginia Superintendent's Association and then the Virginia School Business Officials Association, we always do a joint winter conference, and we were able to be there this past Monday and Tuesday. And a lot of the conversation among divisions were planning for when these ESTER funds, these federal pandemic dollars, end. So I can report to the school board that we have been working on this really strongly since September to take a look and see, you know, based on what we project those needs to be, you know, what are the items that we need to plan for now within the budget, even though these grants will not end until about two years from now. So we are actively looking at that as part of this budget development process. So as we continue to look at pressures, we also are looking at savings. We always want to make sure that we repurpose as much as we can within a budget every single year. And we also make sure that we align those pressures and also the requests from departments with the school board's priorities and the strategic plan. So at this point, we'll continue to work through the budget. We'll monitor the General Assembly's actions. We'll conduct our two-by-twos with the school board and also the buddy meetings. All of that will happen in the February timeframe. And then March 1st, I will be back to the school board to present the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget for next school year. We are scheduled to have public hearings on March 8th and March 15th, all here at Jones Magnet Middle School. And then the school board will be scheduled to vote on March 22nd. So that does complete tonight's budget forecast for fiscal year 2024, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Branch. Any questions or comments from board members?
I would like to just, as a testament to the support and the commitment from the city and the city council, when you look at Slide 6, you notice that you highlighted 24% of our overall budget comes from local dollars. That's a very good number when we look at some of our other school divisions throughout the state. I would say that's a very high number, and it shows the commitment that we have in this community to education and working with our children, so it's a testament to who we are as a city. And when we say every child, every day, this is our community, and we take that very seriously. So I do want to thank the city for their investment, on behalf of the board, for their commitment, and it shows there in our budget. You know, that whole ad, "Put your money where your mouth is"? Yeah, we have some skin in the game when it comes to Hampton City. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, we will move right into the financial report. Ms. Branch, please.
Yes, good evening again. So for tonight's presentation, I am actually presenting the November 2022 Monthly Operating Report. And at the end of November, our revenues totaled $85.3 million, and we're approximately 11% higher when we looked at the previous fiscal year. This difference, it continues to be caused by additional state funding and also just the changes in our local contribution that we get on a monthly basis, which is always based on what our monthly cash flow needs are. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled $107.4 million, and this was only 0.1% higher when compared to the previous fiscal year. I am also happy to report that that enrollment increase is not just impacting fiscal year 2024, but we see some impact projected for the current year, fiscal year 2023. So based on the re-forecast that the Virginia Department of Education released back in December, we are projecting a average daily membership of $18,911 for the current year. And that would be an increase of 41 when you compare that to our budgeted ADM. If this is the final amount when we finish our report for the spring, that could be an estimated $610,000 of additional state revenue for the school division. However, we do not plan for those funds just yet, because we do want to wait till we get through March to see if that is where the final spring ADM will be. And as always, included in the report, you have a list of transfers to and from the technology classification for the end of November 2022. And that completes tonight's monthly operating report.
Any questions from board members? Good job, as always.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent's staff reports. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Moving along. Next item on the agenda is Items for Action. Action item 6. So we have 6.01, VSBA Code of Conduct for Board Members. 6.02, Minutes of School Board Meeting of December 14, 2022. 6.03, Certification of Closed Session of December 14, 2022. 6.04, Review of School Board Policy GBAB-E Employee Information Bulletin. 6.05, Review of School Board Policy GBEE Communicable Bloodborne Diseases. 6.06, Review of School Board Policy GBEF Maintenance or Drug-Free Workplace. 6.07, Review of School Board Policy GBEF-R Employee Substance Abuse and Testing Procedures. 6.08, Review of School Board Policy GBM Instructional Staff Grievances. 6.09, Review of School Board Policy GBO Job Sharing Review. 6.10, Review of School Board Policy GCA Definition of Employee Groups. 6.11, Review of School Board Policy GCAA Tuition Reimbursement. 6.12, Review of School Board Policy GCBBA Recovery of Back Pay. 6.13, Revision of School Board Policy GCBB-B Call Back Pay. 6.14, Review of School Board Policy GCBCA Cobra Policy Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act. 6.15, Review of School Board Policy GCC Professional Leave Guidelines for Employees/Student Teaching Assignments. 6.16, Review of School Board Policy GEA Volunteers in the Schools. And the added item, 6.17, Personnel Action Item 2023-01. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of Action Item 6.01.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Cherry, I heard, or Ms. LaFonja.
Ms. LaFonja.
That we approve the VSBA Code of Conduct for school board members. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Next?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move approval of Action Items 6.02 and 6.03 as a block.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved that we approve items 6.02 and 6.03 as a block. Is there any discussion? All right. Ms. Bowser, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. All right, next.
Mr. Chair, move approval of action items 6.04 through 6.16 as a block.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore that we approve items 6.04 through 6.16 as a block. Any discussion? Ms. Bowser, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. And last item?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the recommendation of the superintendent upheld by the hearing officer in Grievance Matter 2023-Tac 01, and direct the superintendent to move forward with the immediate termination of the employee effective immediately.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore that we approve Personnel Action Item 2023-01 and seconded by Mr. Samuels. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowser, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Item number seven on the agenda, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communication or petitions. And we have received two so far. Ms. Bowser, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. I'm gonna let you finish. I'm fine until I start reading. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you very much. And our first speaker tonight is Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Smith, my name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. First of all, Happy New Year, and congratulations to reelection of the three members in this latest cycle. Having said that, what will change as a result of the reelection and the maintaining of the current members of the board? Will the focus be on academics, academic achievements of the students, or will it be on the board and the administrative staff of the school system? That's the question. So will your focus this year continue to be on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and based on the genetic background of the students, or the imaginary sexual preferences of the students, or will it be on their academic excellence? Will you be focusing on oppression, or so-called oppression, and victims, and any notions of boys being girls, girls being boys? Is that really important in the lifetime of a student in our school system? Instead, what is a school system for but ultimately for academic achievement? To get, to help the students reach their greatest achievement and to be able to succeed in life? All those other things that I was mentioning really have nothing to do with their success in life. They're all distractions. Performance should be what's measured, and every student should be able to achieve to his greatest ability. There should be a focus on the basics, just like it was 100 years ago, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Does every student have the ability to do that? Do you do your best to teach the students how to make those achievements? What is excellence in this school system? You say every child, every day, whatever it takes. What does that really mean? If all you're interested in is accreditation of every school, graduation rates, those say nothing about the actual achievement and ability of the students to succeed in life. That's really what you should be looking at. How do you measure the performance of your school system, other than meeting the, you know, the state goals of standards of learning? What does that really say about the student's achievement? It says something perhaps about the school system, but what are you measuring that against in the real world? How do you compare your school system to other school systems? How do you compare it to the national standards? I've heard that that's not significant. And how do you compare it to international standards? There should be a much greater rigor in our school system for the students, and I expect, and I will continue to push you, to look towards that end result rather than the other, the things that don't really matter. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Next up is Mr. Mark Cooper.
Good evening, Dr. Mason, school board, Superintendent Smith. I'm here tonight just to give you guys a word of thanks for what you do. Many people support, well, I say, most people in Hampton support this board 100%. But those few who I believe that plays the Monday morning quarterback, that sits back and point fingers and they're not on the playing field, I'm here to reiterate to you that you guys have backing in the city of Hampton. I am one of your biggest supporters, 30 years plus that you guys have allowed the marching elites to be a part of Hampton City Schools. That's been our energy, is to support you guys as much as we can. And I'm here to stand up for the citizens that back you guys, and those that have questions, professionally come and ask your questions. Don't point fingers unless you willing to get on that football field and see what it takes to educate these youngsters. You guys are truly here for kids. You're not getting a million dollars for this. You sit up and you have to endure things that others can't, including myself. And I'd like to take this time to say this to you, Ms. Ann Cherry, you are a wonderful person. What I endured at those polls a couple of months ago, when you was cursed out and swear it on and did nothing to this person who chose to run for an office here, I have not sat in a good moment since then in my mind and in my heart. So I'm here to tell you, I apologize for what I witnessed and what you had to go through. But you stood up professionally, as a lady, and you represented the Hampton School Board like I always have, supported and watched how you worked. And I appreciate the ones that came down there and supported you and made sure that you was okay, and I had your right side as well. But I do appreciate you, and I appreciate this board, and whatever we can do to help you, we will. And Dr. Smith, your team has done a wonderful job. Hampton appreciates you, and marching leads appreciate you, and the new Vice Chair, we appreciate you, I'm looking forward to talking and speaking with you. And all of you board members, God be with you. And always remember, when you're doing the right thing, then you're gonna have those few that don't want you to do it, continue to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right. Next item on the agenda is information. All right, 8.01, the Hampton City School Board policies, just want to make sure that you are aware that they are available online at the school board website, and feel free to take a look at those policies. If you have any questions or concerns about any of our policies, they are available for a public review. Then 8.02, the next regular meeting of the Hampton City School Board will be on February the 1st, right back here at Jones Magnet Middle School, and the next work session will be held on February the 15th at the Rupert Sargent Building on Franklin Street. All right? And information, I will start with the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair and members of the school board. Happy New Year to all, and congratulations to you, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, on your most recent accomplishment. We're proud of you, so thank you. And I would like to say to members of the board and the viewing audience to be mindful that accreditation and on-time graduation are both direct products of actual student achievement. And so I would like for them, our viewing audience, to make that connection, to understand that you can only graduate from Hampton City Schools based on student achievement and accreditations earned based upon student achievement. And so, thank you for the opportunity, sir.
All right, thank you. Anything from our board members? Any other information? Student rep, Mohammed?
Yes, Dr. Mason, I just want to say, first of all, congratulations to all the reelections, and congrats to Dr. Tina Banks Gray, and as well as you for getting nominated again. And I can't wait for the, this year, and for the upcoming, you know, meetings and having an opportunity to really, you know, not only advocate for change, but to be an activist. I'm in my youth in government program at the YMCA, and I see so much passion, I see so much activism, and I want to, you know, tell you all that I see that within you as a, you know, as servant leaders, each one of you are servant leaders, and I really see that, and I hope to really move forward and pursue the next chapter of my last year with you all, so yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I do want to take a moment to announce, there's a fundraiser going on this weekend to assist our Phoebus High School football team. They are raising money for their championship rings and jackets, I do believe. And the event, there's an event that will be held this weekend at Noir at 1 o'clock, and that's in Phoebus. We don't have a phone number. It said Noir in Phoebus at 1 o'clock, and that's on Mellon Street.
It is.
All right, so if you want to support, just make a contribution. You can come on down and support our Phoebus Phantoms, who did an excellent job representing Hampton City Schools, winning the state championship in football. All right? Anything else, board members? Hearing no other business to be brought before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned.